Good evening and welcome to December 16th, Council of Council City Connersville. All rise for pledge allegiance, led by Councilman Brian Robbin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like to raise your hand for the invocation, Pastor?
That's perfect.
Father, we love you today. We're thankful for you bringing us through another year. Thankful for your hand of protection upon our city and our simple servants. I ask that you bless our department heads, Lord. That you bless our mayor and treasurer. Strengthen this council and give them peace and wisdom. And I pray that it would be done in Connersville as it is in heaven. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone this evening. We will begin with real call.
Councilman Barrett.
Present.
Councilman Williams Jr. Councilwoman Thorpe. Councilman Robb.
Present.
Councilman Gray.
Present.
Councilman Collins.
Present.
Councilwoman McQueen.
Present.
Okay, everyone has the minutes from the December 2nd, 2024 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those? If not, take a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, on favor, signify by the signing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried, move on down to new business. We have Resolution 2024-69 reimbursement. Rosemary.
Resolution 2024-69 is a resolution to reimburse $138,348.74 into Council Solar Energy.
Any questions? Now I'll take a motion to approve Resolutions 2024-69.
Second.
Motion second, on favor, signify by the signing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, items B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, and L are all transfers. Resolutions 2025-70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, and 80.
Resolution 2024-70 is a resolution to transfer $30,000 from City Hall Electricity into Pool and Park Pool Employees. Resolution 2024-71 is a resolution to transfer $9,000 from Mayor Cleric to into Market Street Plaza. 2024-72 is a resolution to transfer $1,500 from Mayor Promotion into Farm-to-Table Fund. Resolution 2024-73 is a resolution to transfer $91,500 from Council City Engineer into Landfill Non-Reverting. Resolution 2024-74 is a resolution to transfer $31,500 from Council Fringe into Landfill Non-Reverting. Resolution 2024-75 is a resolution to transfer $50,000 from Council Insurance into Landfill Non-Reverting. Resolution 2024-76 is a resolution to transfer $110,000 from NVH Other Materials into NVH Non-Reverting Fund. Resolution 2024-77 is a resolution to transfer $25,000 from Fire Fringe into Fire Non-Reverting Fund. Resolution 2024-78 is a resolution to transfer $35,000 from Fire Retirement into Fire Non-Reverting Fund. Resolution 2024-79 is a resolution to transfer $90,000 from NVH Other Employees into NVH Non-Reverting. Resolution 2024-80 is a resolution to transfer $25,000 from DOT Fringe into NVH Non-Reverting.
Hey, I know that was a lot. Is there anybody any questions?
I'm going to honor ten motion to approve Resolutions 2025-70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, and 80.
Second.
And a motion second, on favor, signify by the signing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, item M. This one is a Resolution 2025-81. It is the ARPA funds commitment. Reason this is on here, I don't have time to read this, I'll go through all this. We were saving some of our ARPA funds because we need a salt storage facility. And we're, we were, we still are working on a location for that. We were hoping to have it done by then, but we're not. We don't have it done by the end of the year. These funds have to be committed by the end of this year. So, a lot of the stuff, like with Riverboat, we use for equipment and different things. We held off on using any Riverboat money. And then, you'll see, I got a spreadsheet built, how we're using the Riverboat with the remaining ARPA funds to get some more equipment and stuff that we need for everybody. So, we shifted gears last week, week before. I don't remember where it was. It really started growing after some more equipment that we needed. I sent you a sheet kind of explaining everything. I'll go through it, I'm not going to read it word for word because it's four pages long. But I will kind of highlight stuff as we go forward because there's going to be a few things we still don't have solidified yet. And then we're going to explain some of the newer technology we're looking for. We were, I'll just start from the beginning. So, the first one will be TV3. And John, you can help me explain some of this because you're the technical guy. John has a server rack over there that really runs all outgoing signals, is that correct?
It does.
Okay, and that rack is failing. It's old, we know that. A lot of our equipment's been old.
Some parts are over 15 years old.
Yeah, and it's failing. So, we wanted to put some ARPA dollars in there for his rack service. And you can see on the spreadsheet, I've got the breakdown there. Everything in blue, by the way, on that spreadsheet, is ARPA. Everything in orange is opioid non-restricted fund. And everything in yellow is Riverboat. So, that's how we're able to fund all this equipment. So, John has the racks involved. The weather bug station, which I'll have you explain that here in a second. Actually, just go ahead and do the weather bug station.
We purchased that 13 years ago in 2011. It's done very, very well. One of the cool things about the weather bug station is the HD camera that's attached to it that feeds to Weatherbug and is also fed to the Indianapolis and, I believe Cincinnati. WCO uses that as well.
Do they?
Where they pull feeds and they, you see it all the time if you watch them in the mornings, to show local weather in local areas. We're one of the only ones that have an HD camera on that feed in this region. So, they use this a lot, which is pretty cool. The camera that's on there, again, it was 13 years old. In 2019, I had to replace that camera because it failed. I didn't want to spend a lot of money, so I bought a used one. Well, it's failing now, so.
It's failing, there can't be a part for it.
No, that's the problem is that this tower is so out of date now that they don't offer any way to upgrade these things. I did replace the cable a couple of years ago to get us back up and running temporarily there. But the data collection devices that are on it are quite outdated. So, I think it's a valuable tool to know exactly. And people love to know the local weather. They just love it.
I use that a lot.
Yeah.
It is. And then, the other one is the digital sign for City Hall. This is something that John has been working on with all the new live streaming law coming on. We got digital, or digital. We've got meetings that'll be taking place in here. There's meetings that'll be taking place in my conference room. They both can livestream. And John's done a very good job of making sure that works. The digital sign is a place where they can walk in the City Hall. And I don't want to say it's a billboard, but it shows what meetings and where they're at, the times of the meetings. It's really a community calendar as well.
It'll do whatever we need it to do.
The advantage of doing it really together with his new racks is now he can build everything at TV3 and control everything from over there. I don't have to have a separate system over here.
The other part of that is that our current graphic system was purchased in 2009. That's 15 years old. I'm amazed it still works.
So, we're just trying to get a better system so people can come in and know what meetings are where. All the time, I guess Rosemary and I see a lot of people come to City Hall, even though we've got a sign that says, "Mom, it's this way, this way." They're still asking lots of questions and we're always directing people where to go, which is not a bad thing, but a digital sign to help alleviate some of that. And the last one on his list is a mobile internet device, which he has one. Again, it's old and outdated, but if you notice, like some of the recent livestreams or away in particular, we lose signal a lot.
It's a 4G.
A lot of it because this device doesn't work. So, it is through Verizon. So, we stuck that on there as well, so he could really boost his internet capabilities when he's out and about. Don't really use it in town much, but it's when we're on the road. I guess we do use it in town.
It gives us the ability to stream from any location.
Well, there you go. So.
Which is going to become even more important.
It could, yeah. I mean, for instance, our 4G unit would not work at the high school right now. We don't get any kind of signal up there. 5G probably would. And this Thursday, they're having a large meeting for area planning up there at the high school.
With the new livestreaming regulations that are coming up next year, that's going to become more important.
It will.
Yeah, they're only going to broaden that livestream, so we know that's coming.
Absolutely.
But that's all I had. Is there anybody any questions for John, for anyone? Okay. The next one is, I've got it under police, but it's really going to be police, fire, and a little bit of EMS. I don't see it a whole lot with EMS, but we can use it for some. And that is some different technologies with drones. You guys, Chief, you want to come in with your guys? And they can explain more of the drone technology. Chief Jones brought to me a drone. It's been a little bit. This one, we never thought we'd be able to purchase or acquire. So, it is expensive, but I also laid out a 10-year plan on how we want to pay for it. But with these two drones together, I'm looking for a SWAT drone and an overhead drone. That will make our jobs a whole lot safer and better. The SWAT drone is piloted, and they'll explain how that works. This one is more autonomous. And I know the timing's bad with all the drones in New York City, so that's not what this is, by the way. This is a true man device. They're not big and they're small, but the technology it has is phenomenal. Even with the recordings, it logs all the recordings, just like the body cams do. And it's on a secure server, so you guys can go ahead and talk about the drones you can. John's got some videos too.
A vendor reached out to me that obviously specializes in the drones. And for fire in police, I wanted to do a demo, so I thought, why not? And this has been actually quite a while back. It was very interesting. They are quite expensive, so I approached the mayor. I said, if there's any point in time where we did have some extra funding, I could see how these would be very beneficial. I don't know what videos you're going to see, but the drone basically can be self-deployed if we have a major fire. I know the most recent apartment fire that you're probably all familiar with that we had, we were able to, some officers were able to get the drone that the sheriff's department uses for us. I didn't request it, I think EMA possibly did. We were busy at the time. They brought it up there, came to me, showing me, you know, view from above. It was very, very helpful. We could see things that we weren't able to see from the ground. That being said, this drone has the capability of being remotely launched. If something come in to where we had a confirmed large fire, dispatch would have the ability to launch it. I could tell dispatch to launch the drone. Basically, all they have to do is punch in an address. The drone has its own house, I guess is what you would call it, and it can be placed anywhere. Like I said, I don't know what the video is going to show, but the, basically, the house opens up, the drone launches, and it launches to a certain default elevated height. And it goes straight to that location and it's automatically programmed to just start doing a 360 in the air around that whole location. And if myself or someone else that's authorized to operate it shows up on the scene, you know, with a laptop, I can sit there and take control of it. And, you know, radio to the crews, you know, what I see from up above and, you know, stuff like that. It does, I mean, it has amazing capabilities that I think would be beneficial for the police department. I think it was elevated 300 feet was what they had it set at default. They hovered, I think the gentleman was actually located in North Carolina, and he launched this drone in Texas. And it went up around the supermarket and he paused it and was able to zoom in on the license plate from 300 feet here, and it was crystal clear. So, I could see how that would be very beneficial to them. And they would probably get a lot more use out of it than I would. I guess I should say hopefully, because I don't wish to have large fires. But it can be very beneficial to, you know, both departments. And like I said, that was the second. We did another demo with that company, so that was the second demo I sat through. And it's very, very neat technology. And, you know, if the money's available, I think it's kind of a no-brainer. And there's a lot of other departments that are using that.
Yeah, and I'll go through everything because they, some of this package with the police kind of links together with the SWAT vehicle, because this drone has the capability to broadcast. I know when they were doing the demo, you were sitting right next to me. And he got your phone number, he texted you, and he had the image around his phone of what that drone looked at. He could zoom in and look at stuff. The pilot didn't have to zoom in for him. He could do it straight from his phone. And it's unlimited number of devices. So, if the SWAT teams are out or the fire's out, they can send that camera view right to their phones or tablets or whatever. We have a TV on the SWAT truck we want to put in there, and that TV will also be broadcast for them to sit in their command center as well.
Thermal capabilities, you know.
It's thermal, it's everything.
Being able to see, you know, at night, you know, if they happen to be looking for someone or something like that. Very, very neat. Like I said, I don't know what video, video you're going to watch.
John, will you play that video and then?
We have two videos. The Arrowhead.
Play the Paladin first.
Yeah, Paladin has information. The Arrowhead has no audio.
Oh, okay. Good. Let me step here. Yes, step here. Way all of you.
Introducing Paladin EXT, breaking through various radio-based WAVs and limited range with an easy installation of the EXT module. Fly your DJI drone beyond visual line of sight. EXT enables you to operate first responder programs without the need for a remote pilot in command on the roof. Anywhere in the country with a 90E connection. Locate the command center. Receive a call for service and have a live overhead view within minutes. Gather valuable situational awareness on the ground and broadcast a live feed to your team across multiple devices before first responders arrive on the scene.
It is a game changer. DFR is the future of drone first responders. It lets you respond to calls where seconds count.
We're also excited to extend the autonomous control and unlimited range of the EXT to other industries and unlock new possibilities in 3D mapping, inspections, and agriculture.
Paladin EXT, limitless range, unlimited possibilities.
Like Chief Jones said, it has a housing that it sits in. It's HVAC controlled, and it charges the batteries on its own. And when they deploy that drone, they don't have to punch in the address. They pull up a map, they can click a point and send it to it. This thing opens up, it launches. When it battery dies, or closer, battery dying, battery being exhausted, it brings itself back, lands it, charges it, and can redeploy. Like Chief said, they can deploy themselves, but if they need to take control of it in the field, they can take control of it. Now, in order to take control of it, you have to be a licensed pilot, which we have. But to deploy the drone, it's the only drone out there that does not require a licensed pilot to deploy. And they will come in and train everyone to deploy this thing. So, that makes that very handy.
It has also capabilities. You can create different lists of people, like default lists, that you would want to view any incident. And if, you know, if it happens to be, whatever it is, a fire, you can click on a specific list and it'll send a text to every person on that list with a link. You can click on that link and you can view what everybody else is viewing, you know, at the same time that that, whatever incident's going on. You know, like he said, it's a smart, it's a smart machine. It knows, you know, it knows how far it can go on a certain battery life, how far away it is from its home. It, once it gets to a certain, you know, battery life, it knows it has to go back home. It lands, it charges automatically, I believe, 20, 30 minutes?
20 minutes.
Recharged on. Yeah, it has the ability, you can override that. You can land it on the scene if you have a battery with you. You could land it on the scene, change batteries right there, you know, launch it again. But I'm sure we're not thinking some of the capabilities.
There's so much this thing will do.
It was endless.
Really, what you're paying for with this drone is the software package itself. And you'll see that this drone is quite a bit more expensive than the other one we're looking at. And I'll explain why that is and how we're funding that. But I want to give you the overview of the drones and to show you how we're paying for everything.
Is this the one that can go inside?
No, this one does not go inside. There's two drones we're looking at. One that goes inside. I have a personal drone that I use. I cannot fly inside. Oh, I can, but I lose, I don't have good control, because mine's GPS guided, which this phone, this one, is it GPS or cellular?
It runs off cellular.
This one's cellular, so it's completely different. And the Arrowhead, which we're going to look at in a minute, is also cellular. And that thing can fly inches on the ground. Mine, I think mine's two feet, is as low as I can go. But there's big differences on drones. But our thought process is have one that would go inside first and then the overhead kind of watch everything. The thermal is very good. One of the things that didn't show, if we're on a call and they're right out of the back of the house, we can see them. Dispatch or whoever can tag that person, and it puts a box around them and follows them. We know where they're going. So, this makes your job so much more safer. Search and rescue, it'd be phenomenal. In case people wondering, no, we cannot see through your roof. That will not penetrate your roof. And we cannot see through your windows. It does not penetrate windows. So, it's not like it's a spy drone. We're not doing any of that. It's to make these guys' jobs safer and more efficient. And a lot of times, I mentioned at first, it might take a while to get tang of it. Most of the time, they're talking on the, on the video, so when we talk to them, it gets to the scene before first responders. So, when they arrive on scene, they can see what's going on before they ever get there. So, it's a very nice tool.
It helps a lot with truck placement.
It helps a lot.
Have an overhead view, you know, you can decide where, you know, your trucks are needed best. So, there's a lot of advantages. Like I said, I approached the mayor several months ago with it, and I think he kind of laughed at me.
I did?
You know, we just had a conversation, and I said, "This is really cool. You need to look, you need to check it out." I know it's not. Matter of fact, the vendor kept bugging me on email, and I said, "Buddy, this thing will probably happen, but I appreciate your time." You know, there was, you know, possibly some money left over. And I said, "You might consider this." I mean, it could be huge for me, huge for the police department, anybody involved. So, we did a, you know, second demo on it. I think it'd be, it could be very beneficial.
Absolutely. The second drone, you want to talk about the Arrowhead? And he can talk more about the Paladin too. He's, he is a licensed pilot. Go ahead and introduce yourself. How's that?
I'm the counsel. My name's Officer Aaron Wilson. I've been with the department two years prior to being with the department in J County for another two years. I acquired my pilot's license in August of this year, where I've been a part of eight missions so far with search and rescue, SWAT, and all of, so a member of our Fayette County. It is the special operations arrow response unit. It's myself, Wade Wallen, the EMA director, and Deputy Sheriff Justin Gray. So, in the three of us, we have three drones. County has the DJI Mavic 2, which is our thermal drone that we use for search and rescue and other instances like that. We also have a smaller drone that we use for the SWAT team that has its limitations so far that Justin flies. And we have an Altair that we just now acquired for the EMA, that helps with search and rescue, but does not have a thermal. So, the Arrowhead drone that we'll be showing you in a minute, we've flown at the Spartan Bowl during our class. They came down to a demo versus see interior drones, because all drones cannot be interior, and they're all different. With the Arrowhead, it can hover about an inch off the ground, get under bleachers, seats, desks, anything like that, maneuver through a restroom, going through stall doors, underneath stalls and all that, going through ventilation shafts, going down through wiring cables and not get snagged. If it is stuck, it can throw itself over, which just means it flips itself over and can get back in the fight. With a regular drone, you cannot do that. Once it goes down, you either have to send another drone up or manually go over there and pick it up and move it. With the Paladin software, as we said, we're able to get eyes on the scene first. So, if we know suspicious call, if it's a real call or not, someone's in the yard with a gun, go see what's going on before we send officers there to potentially be hazardous to their health and safety or the individual's health and safety. Be able to get eyes first to see what is actually going on, so we're not going in blind. For fire, it helps with seeing the hotspots and what's being affected by the fire or any incident for EMS, it'd be leg match casualty or a automobile wreck with multiple people involved. Being able to see who was where, if someone got ejected out on the field, we'll be able to see where that person is to get the immediate aid. And as I said, we did, I've done eight missions so far. One was in Union County last week on a car wreck, making sure nobody was ejected from a vehicle that went down that pavement and rolled over. So, with the software and programming and with the drones, we're able to cover more landmass than we are on foot. It gives us more opportunities to serve the people of Connersville and Fayette County and our surrounding neighbors to be able to help them with their issues if they need us. It's a lot cheaper than putting a helicopter in the air and waiting for them to get from Shelbyville to here to where we need them. So, with the Arrowhead, it is piloted, so it's not programmed. It'll take a pilot to fly it with indoors, which is not controlled airspace under the FAA. So, anybody can fly it indoors. We recommend it is a controlled pilot. From a pilot who does it, means how we're more in tune with the software, able to control it and going from there. It just helps us get eyes on the ground. And with the Arrowhead, we can also use it for if there is a tornado that strikes, hits a building, we can send it in to do search and rescue to find out if somebody's trapped or not. It cannot go in the fires because it is made out of polymer plastic, so it's not rated for fires just because it can melt. But we can use it for search and rescue, be able to send to buildings where if it seems a little unsteady, send the person in where they could fall through a weak point or anything like that, we can be able to rescue that person, find them, and know that we can get them resources.
The other advantages with both these drones can use for river rescue. When we need it, someone's in the river. We have a lot of tubes in the river now and boats and kayaks. And this will be something we can fly up and down the river a lot faster. I never forget, one of the problems, Chief Jones and I is always looking for access points to the river for not just training purposes, but there's an incident, how do we get there? So, we try to identify access points, and you still can't see it all.
No.
That's a very tough river to get to, and the drone could fly right now, so.
This seems like a stupid question, but is it bulletproof?
No. So, no drone is bulletproof. But also, in that effect, if someone fires up at the drone, they're catching federal charge, but it's the same charge as shooting down an airliner. So, it's gel flying. There's no offense, but it's about the FAA gets involved and they are charged federally for trying to shoot down an aircraft.
John, you want to play the Arrowhead video, sir?
Sure, not very big.
It'd be very useful for pulling cable.
If you don't know what that is, look at it. It's above ceiling tile like this.
Everyone need to add some music to that video.
Or audio or something.
They had music to it.
Yes, but it moved.
Ah, thank you. You can say.
No, thank you.
Okay, so that's the interior drone. A lot more capabilities than my drone. And if you look at drones, you'll see there's many different types and I did the exact same thing that are significantly cheaper. But when you start adding everything that they don't have to them, the price is right there. And now you've got a bunch of aftermarket parts added to a drone to get close to the same capability, not even all the same capability of that one. So it's like a few thousand dollars more for this one, if I remember, after it's all said and done, but it's worth it.
Because it's NDA compliant now. With that being said, what's going on currently in the federal government? They're passing laws where DJI drones cannot be used because it's Chinese manufactured. So that's what's going on right now. So to use a grant or government assistance to purchase an aircraft or drone for this matter, it has to be made in the US of A or made somewhere that is not China. Now most, every part made for a drone comes from China and it's built in another country. So that's what the NDA compliance is, just saying it's made here and it's not in violation. So we can, you can use grants and stuff like that to purchase the drone and not be in trouble. With the Arrowhead, it is built in West Lafayette. It's three Purdue graduates who do it. So we spoke to them in the past. Maintenance updates and all that, it's taken care of. You send it down, they fix it, send it right back and it's all in the life of that device. So there's nothing actually to add on, no.
Updates are included in one of those.
There's a yearly fee, but that includes batteries.
Yeah.
They replace the batteries every year and then the updates. So there is a little fee, it's a couple thousand a year, so it's not much.
It's not bad.
But it covers all that.
And they're actually being used by, I believe, Florida, New York, California, South Carolina, Georgia for interior use. That's what Arrowhead's been used for. So it is widely used in the US right now for law enforcement.
The piloted one, let's see, my question is, the other one just could be computed, put in an address and takes us off and goes to where it's supposed to.
Yes.
Does the piloted one also have that capability?
No, so for interior, you have to fly that one.
Right, and I'd understand that.
We can be outside the building and be able to check.
So this one has to be piloted all, the whole?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
With the Paladin's software, they can launch it, send it to the site and then it can be taken over by a remote pilot.
Right, okay.
So they can always have someone being controlled, so nothing happens.
It doesn't require, it's the only drone that does not require a pilot.
Is there additional insurance that needs to be covered with it?
With flying insurance, yes. If you want to fly for an hour, there is insurance online that is around thirty dollars. Insurance is not a lot to cover the drones themselves. And you can do it, either have a going policy or do it for every flight you do. You can go online and purchase like two hours' worth of insurance for thirty dollars, something like that.
If there's, if you have any questions on the drones, I'll go into how I would like to pay for them. Okay. So you can see the expenses, the drones are not cheap. The Arrowhead drone itself is twenty-one thousand. That also has the yearly fee included in that one. The overhead autonomous drone, you can see I've got it broken down in two different areas. The reason I did that was I called the company, I was like, I don't want to invest in something that I can only run for a couple of years. It doesn't make any sense to spend that kind of money. So I was trying to get a ten year, a way of paying to pay for this drone for ten years. And so the drone itself is the next line down, which is fifteen thousand dollars. Then they give you a break if you do a three-year contract. So they did the three-year contract and if you add the ARC money with the opioid non-restricted, I got two years, cause the opioid non-restricted, it's not the same amount of money every year. It's kind of weird and random how they did that. But over a ten-year period, I got two years where I'll be short a couple of, I'll be wrong if I said. Did I put it in the notes? How much was it, short?
Thirteen.
Thirteen thousand and.
Thirty-six thousand.
Thirteen and nineteen.
Thirteen and nineteen, so each year it's thirteen thousand one year, then nineteen the next year. Riverboat can offset that cost. We haven't touched Riverboat because we've used ARC dollars instead. So Riverboat's been building and that's for equipment. So those two years can be covered with Riverboat fund and that'll give us a ten-year subscription for the autonomous drone. And it doesn't come out of general fund. That, that's how we look to fund that. Now, that being said, if you look at the SWAT truck equipment, some of the equipment in there is the TV, the internet, the same internet John was looking for for TV3, when he put the SWAT, that gives them excellent internet wherever they go. And that way they can communicate with the drone, they can communicate with, what's the server here? I just lost the name of it. Your.
Spillman.
Spillman software, they can communicate with all of that. So that's how I was looking to pay for the drone. Yes, the insurance will be additional cost, we don't have exact numbers on that yet, but Riverboat can also help offset those costs for the insurance for that equipment. With that, forty-five, it's actually, the discount's forty-five thousand a year. After the three years, it's forty-nine thousand a year. But that covers all your annual battery replacements, that covers, there's a lot that goes into that. So it's not just you're paying for a subscription of forty-five thousand for the software. You are paying for the software, but it's software for dispatch, it's software for our computers, it's all the training involved, there's a lot that goes into this. And it's the data storage, like with our cameras, that's a big piece of the puzzle. We want to store those off-site, not here, so we want to keep those off-site. Same thing with our body cameras, we don't store anything on-site, it's all housed off-site. So that's the drones, how I like to pay for those. And then the rest of it is, if you look, Chief, you want to come up and talk about the gas, ammunition and training ammunition? Cause I don't want to get it wrong.
So I think as far as our training goes, we want to try to keep it as live, as realistic as possible. And in the past, what we have, what we call simmunitions, that's what we use in training. We use our own duty weapons, it's conversion kits, so it doesn't damage our weapons, our ARs and our handguns. And it shoots a powdery projectile, so it's basically paintball without the paint in it. So it's a live, live fire, we train with our own weapons when we're actually helping about. We're using the safes, we're using the sites, our magazines. I mean, it's just a better way to train and we've done it in the past. And the simmunitions, it's not cheap. I mean, it costs about what it costs for regular ammo. But you can't use regular ammo on, you know, on our training. So it's a benefit to the police department if we can train in live situations and there's tools to do that with and one of them is simmunitions. As far as the gas on your sheets go, we purchased a forty millimeter gas gun. It shoots gas into vehicles or houses or to try to flush people out. If we're on a call where instead of sending the guys in or dog in, we do that first. Those aren't cheap to replace. They're pretty pricey and you usually use ten or fifteen, depending how big the house is, each call out. So we're fortunate enough to get a few hundred, I don't remember the exact number that we got about a year or so ago. And we've since used half of those already, so that's part of the gas. Any questions on any of that?
The gas is replacing what we've used.
Yeah, that's replacing what we've already used just to get back up.
And just for your own knowledge, it takes anywhere from a thousand to three thousand dollars of gas every time we use it. So it can be very expensive, but it's very safe for the guys.
Yeah.
And the ammunition on there, I know you talked about the training ammunition, but some of this ammunition is also, it's not duty ammunition, it's ammunition like, six thousand rounds of AR won't last long. Six thousand rounds is like a lot, but they have to train every month on these things.
We train monthly as far as our live fire at targets. And like the mayor said, it's not our duty. We have duty rounds, but we rarely shoot that obviously. So the majority of this is our ball ammo that we do at the range or, you know. So that's included in our training to be more proficient, make sure our weapons are zeroed and it's the same size rounds and ball as we carry on the game, so.
The SWAT truck equipment, we have the SWAT truck, we've had it for a couple of years. It's the old library truck. It's clean, we put new tires on it.
In service.
All the logos are off, but in order to use it for SWAT, we got to get a logo, have the proper lights on it. And then it's also for the inside, cause it's a blank slate.
Bookshelves.
It's bookshelves, we can't use bookshelves. The one caveat to the SWAT equipment, I don't have all the prices, I do now, we think. We were looking at different ways, do we build our own inside out of wood? It'll work, but it's not the best. Or do we have one fabricated, Chase McCombs got a suppressor fabricated. I don't have his price in here. We can still take out a Riverboat next year if that's what we want to do, but his price was an extra fourteen thousand for him to custom build everything, all the steel shoving, lockers.
We sent out our, a couple of our guys out to some neighboring SWAT, Muncie in Richmond, and they got some ideas and, you know, they house their weapons and their gas and their, everybody's individual uniforms and bulletproof vests and their separate cuppies inside that van of theirs. So that way everybody's not having to come here or go there to get their equipment, they have it. There's just one thing about that and we, it has to be inside, environmentally, you can't be outside in the humidity or, you know, twenty below, you know, with all that gear and gas and everything on there. So that's a work in progress as far as that goes. We mentioned SWAT van, but it's going to be a police command center also. We'll take it, you know, to events. It's got, you know, gen rig around there, it's got air conditioning, it's got overhead heating. So, you know, if it's in the middle of the summer event, we'll have it at the event for us and the public to be able to utilize that if they need to get out of the weather. So it's, it's a SWAT van, it'll be equipped with things we need to go on callouts. But we're going to, we're going to also use it for different events around the city, natural disasters, whatever it might be, you know, if it's flooding or, you know, tornado or something, whatever it might be, we can utilize it also, it's not one dimensional.
Right, but like I said, the only thing not in there is an extra fourteen thousand, which we can do with Riverboat next year to help get that truck wherever we really want it. Again, we can do it with wood, but the metal makes a whole lot more sense than that truck. The detective equipment, I, I'll get it wrong, I'll never remember all the acronyms you want to talk about. Let me see here.
Start with CBSA.
They requested some different radios. We, the radios are just a cellular device, two-way radios, the eight hundreds. They used to be secure, people listen to them now. The detectives want to be able to communicate with that people hearing them. And that's pretty expensive, that's like fifty bucks a year, less a couple thousand a year. And then the rest of them are the LEADS program, you want to talk about the LEADS program?
I'm not real surprised on the LEADS program, but I know the detectives utilize that for information gathering. And so that's, that's something important to them. I've got some information here when I do my monthly report on how LEADS or anything else benefits our investigations. And that's, that's part of that.
That's a subscription that we have to pay every year. The other one is the CBSA machines in the training.
So I know a couple meetings ago, I think I asked permission to apply for the JAG grant and that was where we were hoping to get, for our CBSA voice dress, we've had one. It's probably, we've got a machine that's probably ten, fifteen years old and of course, as you all know, it's a computer, so it's outdated. We don't currently have a operator right now, our last operator has since retired. So that takes place of a lie detector, which is not admissible. So the voice dress is and it's training, it's, the price that you guys see is training for two officers and the new equipment comes with it to run the CBSA. So the grant fell through and we didn't get the grant unfortunately, so.
We stuck it on there.
Stuck it on there and, I mean, that's something that we use a lot, our guys use a lot.
I know I stuck out the detective, that's really the whole department, but then the last item for detective, they just said they need some new desks, their desks were open and broken, they're still using them, but. I just went three desks, so I stuck three desks on there. Anybody have any questions for Chief, before I move on to the next one? Alright, thank you. Fire department, I know Scott, or Chief Jones, sort of up here, he's the one that really brought the drone. The other one is fire detectors, we pass out fire detectors every year, we always get a grant to purchase those. There were two people from this, two different entities from the city applying for the same, not the same grant, but the same grantor, and they won't do both. So I said, let's just pull the fire alarms out, put them on the ARC dollars and then we can get five thousand dollars worth of fire alarms and as people come in the fire station, they can pass them out. So that's really the only thing on there is the smoke alarms for the fire department. If you move down to the next one, Market Street Plaza. The first one was security cameras. We had a, our security camera company go out and assess our needs for security cameras and things we want to cover. So that's what he come up with for the cameras at Market Street Plaza. We already have internet there, so internet's going, not going to factor into that because we put wifi out there, when did we do that, three years ago?
Two or three years ago.
So we have very good internet over there. The digital signs will be almost the same signs we want to put in City Hall. These will be outdoor digital signs, they will mount on each side of the pole, there are two black poles at Market Street Plaza. And that will be running billboards and again, one advantage of this is John can control everything from TV3. It'll just make a good place to advertise. And we do events, which we want to do a lot there, you don't have to get banners printed, John can make them and we show them on the screen. Makes setup and tear down a whole lot easier and it keeps our overall cost down for the events. So there's two digital signs on there and I stuck some money there for programming. The goal, I stuck some money in the, from the resolutions in there for programming. My goal is to get two years of programming, can I do it without them out? I don't think so, but I'm sure I'll try. I don't have anyone fundraising for this right now. My goal is to get a group to start taking over the concert and events and then start doing some fundraising to get those, to get those going. But this would give us at least a year, hopefully two years of money, so we can start getting this started and getting some excitement going and people start donating to it. Parks department, we had the same security camera company assess the different areas in the park. I did lay those out here. I put parks, the cameras would be for the Longwood Bridge, the pool, pickle tennis ball courts, skate park playground area, Second Street Park. And you can see the amount is ten thousand, but we only need twenty-two hundred. That's because the last round, we had eight thou, a little over eight thousand left over, so we'll need to use two thousand ARC dollars to get the cameras. The last one is, Mr. Wilson, you out there? Jeremy?
Yeah.
You're going to have to help me with this one here. The transfer station, this is kind of a biggie, this is not going to be all ARC dollars. So we don't have all the quotes on this, so this one could be more Riverboat funds as well. We think we're pretty close on this. One of the things with the, with the transfer station, as a contractor who uses it, it drives me crazy. You go in, you weigh in the back, you drive around, you sit in line. People always cut in line because they don't really know that's what the line's waiting for, it just ticks people off. You back up, you dump, you go weigh in and you drive back around. And most people walk back up to the top because there's so much traffic and they walk back down, it creates a bottleneck. And there's only one lane going out. So what we want to do is put a scale house down at the bottom, widen the lane so it's two lanes and the person in the scale house can tell them to go to door one, door two. When they come in, they weigh in, they get a ticket. When they come out, they can pay right there at the scale house, they can do that right there, they can tell them when to dump, when to leave. And they also will be able to control the compactor. We were going to put the compactor up by the transfer station, but it's not going to work too well. So you will put your arrow on where.
Well, I tried, but I don't think it's going to work on the TV very well.
Okay. Where the existing dumpsters are.
Up through here.
Right there.
And then the compactor will go here.
We want to put the compactor there, but the scale house person can watch the compactor, make sure stuff. make sure stuff's not getting put in or shouldn't be put in there. And they can also do the compacting, cause you don't want the public doing the compacting. That's something our guys need to do. But, there'll be a two-way communication so they can talk up to the top. But that will really reduce the bottlenecking going on. The biggest portion of this, we have a little bit of unknown, is the scale itself. When that scale broke down, when, this summer or this fall? I don't remember when it happened.
Yes.
It was down for what, four to six weeks?
Yep.
Winning on a very simple part.
A load cell.
And we can't get anymore, cause as with all technology, it's outdated. So, we asked for a price for a new scale to eliminate this, cause we heard we had some foundation problems. I really can't confirm that, cause you won't know until you remove the scale to see. So, we said, give us a price for a new scale with a new foundation. If we can reutilize the foundation, then that'd just come off that price. So, if I want a worst-case scenario on what it looks like to put a new scale and a complete new foundation, there's also a ticket reader system we're gonna put out there. Excuse me, that would just help out with the process. So, the, the price you have on the scale, I have it all in your, in your pocket. It's a hundred and ten thousand, but it could be less than that. But, there's still a lot of unknowns with this, in particular the scale house and everything. Getting, we gotta get new lines around, we got power supply across the street. We don't, we didn't get time to get a price to figure out what's in what ticket that power supply to us. It's a power supply, it's a meter that we don't use anymore, so we can access it. We just have to get it there. So, there's a few unknowns, but those are things that Riverboat can also fund. Did I miss anything on the scale and the layout?
Okay, I think you did a great job.
Trying. But really, that'd, that'd solve a lot of the bottleneck issues we have down there.
If that foundation's good, I mean, there's forty thousand dollars, it doesn't have to be reborrowed, so.
Correct.
Until, like you said, until it comes out of there, we're not really gonna know.
You don't really know until you remove the scale. That's why we had the price put in there. With the scale house, I'm working with the WCC to build that, they're excited about it. I'm gonna reach out to them, hopefully this week. And they were trying to design something to give us a presentation, but it's not gonna be a big scale house, it's gonna be small. I want windows all around, it's gotta be HVAC controlled. So, it'd be a nice little setup for everybody.
Yeah, that ticket will make things a whole lot more efficient too, when they get, as a cell, you know, their tear weight, what they weighed in coming out. So, it's get a ticket coming out. There's no getting out of your vehicle, walking up to the, the transfer station. There's a guy that's man inside there right now, has to watch, physically watch what comes across the scale. Now, that ticket will say, be designated to that customer, and it just kinda gets rid of that inefficiency there, bottleneck there, so definitely can be a good idea.
With the credit cards, that'll be billing. There's a lot of different things that can be happening.
Roll into the twenty-first century.
We're getting there.
They can scream and do.
Yep.
Now, I know that was a lot of information, I tried to do it quickly as I can. I mean, I also typed everything out for everyone to hopefully read it. Any questions, comments, concerns, I, I mean.
It's still pretty fluid, so.
It's very fluid. Really, everything's solid except two things, the SWAT van and this. Will hap, whether, I'm sure there'll be some extra expenses there. Even going through the van, you never know what you're gonna find when you tear something up to put something back, so. Okay. I know that was a lot, does anyone, council, questions, comments?
Sounds like you did your homework.
So, we have been very busy, which is one of the reasons you didn't get your packets before Friday morning, so I do apologize for that. But really, what this is, is we're, I'm not committing the ARC funds, we'll have to do that next year. I'm not even committing the opioid funds, we'll do that. Well, we'll do opioid fund, the non-restricting next year. Really what I have to do is commit the ARC funds, but I wanted to show you how we're gonna fund everything so we don't surprise you next year, and oh yeah, now we need this dollar for this and everything. So, really what I gotta do is just do the ARC fund commitment.
And we have to do that, that has to be committed tonight, or by the end of the year, or we have to give it back.
We had to the end of the year, or we have to give it back.
I wanna give it back.
I don't wanna give it back.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a, let's see, where's the motion, a motion second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Okay. Next item will be N and P. We have ordinance seven zero three three and seven zero three five, both transfers.
Pending ordinance thirty-nine seventy-three is a transfer moving forty thousand dollars from council insurance to landfill other trash. Pending ordinance thirty-nine seventy-five is a transfer, ordinance to transfer fifteen thousand dollars from fire fringe into repair of equipment. Moving ten thousand dollars from fringe to fire gear. Moving six thousand dollars from fringe to minor equipment. Moving ten thousand dollars from fringe to building supplies. Moving five thousand dollars from fringe to specialty tank.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve pending ordinance seven, I'm sorry, ordinance seven zero three three and seven zero three five on first reading, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. We have a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And a motion for third and final reading.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item O, Director Steele, you wanna come in here real fast for this? This is a ordinance for the park fees, you wanna talk about it? I'll open up the press hearing and then council comment.
Yeah, so, after working with Adam this year, we just, it's a, it's a common thing that we discuss that we need to evaluate some of our park fees. And so, the things that I am requesting to change a little bit are just a few things. So, on the second page is the John Roberts Building adding a full day rent with a hundred and fifty dollar deposit. We have oftentimes people that want to have a wedding or a large party there. And it would just be beneficial to offer them a full day rental instead of a per hour rental. There is a little bit of a discount doing it that way as well. And so, we want to, I made that change on, on yours. And then on the shelters, we've just increased by five dollars. And then over to the pool, raising our daily fee, entrance fee from, and, and kind of changing the age group as well. So, children, three to seventeen, and then having an adult and doing it that way. There's been a lot of pools lately just offering one spice. It doesn't matter what age you are. And I feel like it's important to us, as of right now, to keep that age difference in the pricing. And so, I requested the four dollars and six dollars. And then down under group rates, just adding four dollars per person, any additional after twenty people. We don't have that, since I've been here, we've not had a large group like that come in during the day wanting to swim. So, just making it one flat rate of four dollars. And then the private pool parties, changing that from to two fifty for the two hours rental. And additional one, one hundred after that for an hourly rate for the pool parties.
So, that, so both of those increased fifty?
I'm sorry.
Both of those increased fifty? Two hours, three fifty, four hours, three fifty, cause they were two hundred and three?
Yes, correct. And my board has already reviewed this and approved it as well.
Are the season passes the same, all of those?
Yeah, we did not change those, those were last year, or well, for twenty twenty-four.
Did you do anything with the credit cards?
They did approve the, the three point five percent fee for anyone who pays with a credit card. So, that would be something additional to our fee schedule as well. The, the prices are not on the fee schedule, we would just add the three point five percent if someone decides to pay with a credit card. If they pay cash, then it's the fee schedule that's printed here, is what they would pay.
Was the cover bridge on there before? Was that added or was that on there before?
That was added last year.
Was it added last year?
Okay, let me open up for public comment, and then I'll open up for council comment. Anyone from the public have anything to say on the park fees schedule? No? Okay, I will close the public hearing and open up for council. Okay, well, if I hear any comments from council, I have a motion to approve ordinance seven zero three four on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. We have a motion to suspend the rules.
Moved. Second.
I have a motion second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. We have a motion for third and final reading.
Motion, second.
I have a motion second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's gonna be effective as of today.
Oh, as of today, not twenty twenty-four?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Item Q, ordinance number seven zero three six. We are establishing a fund to receive a grant that we're awarded. And I'm just asking permission to establish Fund two four eight eight, the Lilly Grant Fund.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. We have a motion to suspend the rules.
Moved. Second.
I have a motion second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. We have a motion for third and final reading.
Motion, second.
I have a motion second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you very much. On the item R, ordinance seven zero three seven, the APC parking ordinance.
Well, it's been a year since I've talked to you all about this. But, most of the things that sort of changes is related to some of the concerns that people had about the number of vehicles, locations of vehicles. They really didn't kind of reflect, you know, the reality that we had now, this included. And with several of these, we're also responding to Commissioner Strong's concerns about some of these things might be appropriate in the city, but they're probably a little, not really for the counts. A lot of the, a lot of the changes really had to do with Commissioner Strong's concerns. But like I said, as the things made it was with the, cause one in particular is, and as I was going around over this last year noticing more of, is that it, I started recognizing more with, of course, the number of vehicles, the number of work vehicles. So, that extreme prohibition and limitation on the number of work vehicles, as long as you work there to be the owner. Okay, the employee can take it home, have it there, the owner with, owner with it, because so much more of this is happening now. And the, the other ones had to do with the big ones, the, also had to do with the, okay, the semi-cabs. And then also because, there's an exemption in there for school, taking the school bus home. But it really wasn't something for the semi-trucks. So, we tried to, it liberalized that a little bit also. But, as with any ordinance, is that, yeah, it can be passed, but when, you know, the problems crop up, it's, it's a matter of, I think that, things can be repaired fairly easily when it becomes aware that something isn't working quite the way it should. So, if there's any questions, anybody in particular?
How do you know?
Oh, my gosh! That's, that's a first.
Merry Christmas.
Oh, that's my Christmas gift from the right.
Happy New Year.
Any questions, though? I don't know what to say to that, Bill.
I did.
Questions are a good thing, Bill.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's what makes us better.
Huh?
It's what makes everybody better, more questions to be asked.
Yeah.
So, if anyone, no one has any questions on their term of motion to approve ordinance seven zero three seven on first read?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. We have a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. I have a motion for third and final reading.
Moved. Second.
I have a motion second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you, sir.
Wonderful, thank you very much. And if you just let me know when that's ready, I can buy and pick up.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now the department reports. Director Powell.
Well, we had to give reports today.
I did too, actually.
For the month of November, we had ten hours thirteen minutes of meeting production, eleven hours forty minutes of original production. We had eleven thousand four hundred and seventy-one views on YouTube. A total of one thousand seven hundred and thirty-one hours. Top content was the, online was the Market Street Plaza live cam, which is still running. And if you haven't seen that, go ahead and check it out, we're playing Christmas music with that as well. And we'll run that through the interview probably. And then Spartan basketball and the city council meeting on November fourth. Facebook analytics shows TV3 had twelve thousand four hundred and eighteen views, and the city Facebook page thirty-nine thousand five hundred and seven views. Any question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, pardon?
Good evening.
Evening.
A couple still awake here, so. Everyone's had a copy of my November twenty twenty-four report. Had a total of three hundred and fifty calls for service. Brought, as of the end of November, to three thousand seven hundred and forty-five. As of this morning, about eleven o'clock, we were at three thousand nine hundred and thirty-five. So, we're gonna break four thousand. Anyhow, we get close to four thousand, break four thousand. That's a busy year, so. See my fuel usage and the fuel package that was submitted. Does anybody have any questions? I'll keep it real quick.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Director Steele?
Okay, so for my report, last, at the last Board of Works meeting, I asked for approval to accept Mitchell Jordan's resignation and then promote Shane Capps, who was working part-time for us in the maintenance department, to full-time. So, I just wanted to let you know, he started last week at full-time. I've been working on the annual report. This is a report you'll receive in January, but we also share this report with our community members. When Logan goes out to get sponsorships for sports, and then when we do as well for our events and everything, that report goes out to them, and they really appreciate sending everything and all the updates. So, I've been working on that. I also have submitted a quarterly update to review for the community benefits funding that we received in May of twenty twenty-four. And this is a great support for the parks department. We also use that for living while aging well. So, we will be getting that funding again next year, and so I'm working on that report for them to review. Girls' basketball just ended last Saturday with their tournament. And then boys' basketball starts in January along with the men's league and church league basketball teams. They will begin in January. So, those registrations are closed now, and the teams are being formed for that. And then lastly, the Christmas in the Park event took place last week, and we had a great turnout. It was a little bit down compared to all of our other events for the year, but the weather was very cold and windy, and so we had a feeling that the attendance would be a little low. We had Santa and Mrs. Claus there, we had a lot of different organizations from the community set up booths and do, pass out treats and do crafts with the kids and games, and they had a lot of fun. And then we had carriage rides as well. We also gave away our, or announced our People's Choice Awards for the light displays that are out in the park right now. And third place went to Carrollton Health Care Centers. Second place went to Alquina Church, and first place went to the Miller Family.
And first place went to the Miller family. So everybody did a great job on the displays. I'm really excited about how the park is looking. And we have people now coming to us telling us that they can't wait to do it next year. And so I just hope it continues to build and build each year. And then for the upcoming events, we just have, the park will be eliminated for the rest of the December. And, and then we have our park board meeting on December twenty third. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Chief Jones.
All right. November, month of report for the Connerville Fire Department. Start off with overtime. We had a total of eight thousand three hundred and fifty dollars ninety four cents of overtime. The manpower shortage portion of that was six thousand seven hundred and twenty eight dollars and eighty six cents. The scheduled overtime portion of that was one thousand six hundred and twenty two dollars and eight cents. Fuel used a total of three hundred and fifty four gallons of fuel for the month, a total cost of one thousand two hundred and seventy two dollars and forty nine cents. We had a total of one hundred and sixty incidents for the month. Twenty seven of those were fire related calls, one hundred and twenty of those were EMS related calls, and we had thirteen auto accidents. On the next page, you'll see our training hours. We had a total of thirty six and a half total instructed hours of training. Twenty three of those hours were fire related classes and thirteen and a half of those were EMS related classes. We had a total of six inspections for the month and twelve hours of fire investigations. The only other thing I'll add is that the Board of Works did approve for me to apply for the, this year's AFT grant. We're going to try to get all of our fire hoses replaced. It's getting a lot of age. There's a majority of it's probably around twenty years. And we do have quite a few sections actually dated in the nineties. Fortunately, we do test the hose annually, and we're starting to get more sections each year that are starting to fail. So we're probably going to start, if we don't get the grant, we're going to start replacing some on a, on a cycle. NFBA does recommend, they, they recommend a ten year cycle. Obviously, not everyone can afford that or do that. We're just a shade outside that cycle. So hopefully we get the grant. If not, we're going to work on kind of a cycle of starting to replace so many sections a year probably, so. Other than that, that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you.
Chief Golds.
All right, so as far as the month of November, reports go, our overtime is still a little dirty. You see it's fourteen thousand, under fourteen thousand. I think everybody's a little worried. Reason for that, we're still down three in the month of November. Gallons of fuels, one thousand six hundred and twenty three. Incidents for November is five hundred and seventy four. Any questions on those quarters? All right, as far as the department goes, in training, we had a hundred and thirty four hours of training. Eight of those were K nine. In our detective division, our drug task force made thirteen arrests. And they still have three ongoing current lists. Criminal detectives had thirteen cases taken in and they have two remaining open. Our ICAC cases, we still have five active. However, one of the cases that we had through ICAC, we had a subject here that was reported. And with the investigation through our ICAC division, which includes several surrounding agencies and state police, that arrest was made in Toronto, Canada. Toronto was happy to take over the investigation up there and locate the subject up there, contacting individuals here in Connersville, so. Our drugs, our marijuana, we took in a hundred and twelve grams, heroin, fentanyl, twenty eight grams, meth, seventy three grams, cocaine, one and a half grams, a hundred and thirty seven pills, three hundred and seventeen needles, and three items of paraphernalia. I will say though, that the needles, we have three hundred and seventeen. Two hundred of those was on an investigation taken off of one person. They had two hundred needles on them. Any questions on those? I have to report that our officer Jacob Els graduated last Friday. He started yesterday with his first day on the road. He's going through our FDO program on second shift. Also, I want to make everybody aware that Saturday is our council Christmas crusade. And we are servicing the B A P project. Earlier today, at the Board of Works, they approved to hire Jalen Simmons from the Sheriff's Department in the jail division to replace Officer David Jones. That's all I have. Unless you guys have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wolf.
Evening, Captain.
Good evening.
Enforcement Office report for November twenty twenty four. During November, I conducted sixty ordinance violations. One of those was a referral to animal control because it came in from outside of city limits. One was a referral to the Health Department. Did one needle pickup. One dealing with animal abandonment that I partnered with Dave from the animal shelter on to get the animal picked up and retrieved and taken care of. One informational request, one dealing with excessive noise, and only one for grass and weeds. Hopefully that's done for the year. Three dangerous buildings, five parking positions, twelve indoor furnitures outside of the homes, and eighteen dealing with trash and rubbish, and fifteen dealing with expired plates for junk cars on properties. The rest of December is going to be primarily focused on looking at prior cases that haven't been completely closed out, but not completely cleaned up. And I'm going to begin issuing fines and a court date for January. If it's cleaned up prior to the January court date, then we'll look at possibly removing those fines, but we've got to have some way to get these properties cleaned up without having to involve the street department and taking them away from the streets during this winter time. So we're going to switch over to the fine process and hit them with a court date. Any questions? Stop by in the morning. Stop by my office in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Wilson.
I'd like to have a copy of the Scully's report. Questions on that report. Canal move down about the canal clearing. Just kind of update earlier this morning, update the board. Got three bids come in, one from Sasser's Friendly and KW Dibs currently doing the work. If you have the bids in front of you, you see KW came in.
They don't have them.
They don't have, okay. They come in with the winning bid. They're currently the ones that are working there now. I think the canal's starting to look good. We'll go onto the north end and continue on north. I'm not quite sure exactly where we're going to stop that right there. We got to do some talking, see where we really end in that area. But it should look really good all through there once it's all done. It's going to be back up in grass. Have some other plans for that area too, to kind of spruce it back up. I know some people like the trees there. Most of the trees there weren't, I mean, they were just random trees there. And so hopefully the ones that get planted won't be, they will overgrow. They'll be, you know, pretty aesthetically pleasing to the community as opposed to what was there. Plus, we have a, I think it's a sixteen inch water main that goes through there and a forty eight or seventy two inch sewer. So the roots won't grow inside there and give us problems down the road. Now the street department, does anybody have any questions on that month of report? We've been using the, I think the total for the month was, for our expenditures was a little higher than usual. That was for the street sweeper engine. So if you have any questions, if you why it looks a little higher, that's probably why. To the transfer station, we've done a good job explaining the scale and what's all needed through that and kind of the logistics of how we're going to reroute the transfer station. In that, I just want the public to know, we will have plenty of signs, direction, everything to give, you know, that optic of, this is, I know it's the way it's been for a long time. This is what we're changing, you know, go this way. So that way there's not a mass confusion as well.
Yes, and along with that, we'll be putting more signs on the compactor for our recycling because the way we've always done in the past is not how it's going to be done going forward. So your bags that you currently use, not going to use them anymore. That's why do I have the street department to go to bother, they're not there. They don't accept the bags anymore. So we can't use the bags anymore. So it's got to be, there'll be signs on there of what you can put in there, what you can't put in there. It's going to be, it's going to be a whole learning curve. The good thing is if you got a question, the skill has to be right there you can ask. It'll be very simple.
And also on that aspect, the street department, there, again, a reminder by the website's been updated. There's a lot of questions on there, frequently asked questions that we put on to kind of help the public mitigate the call volume that we sometimes have, the street department. So anybody that gets on the street department through the city's website can see that it has a lot of questions about lead pickup, where your route is, recycling, and we'll do the same for the trash compactor. If you guys do happen to get on there and look and there's something missing that you would like to see, please contact me so I know we can add to the, we can add to the website.
Looks good.
Thank you. You guys have any other questions?
I think so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a Merry Christmas.
Anyone have any other business? First of all, I just have a couple of things. I just want to thank the Winterfest team. They did a fantastic job for the Winterfest activities. It's a lot of work. Thank Nova for donating the money for the beautiful Christmas tree we had downtown. It was absolutely beautiful.
You can see that coming over Third Street Hill.
Yes.
Beautiful. Come over that and just, it's like a Hallmark card.
It absolutely is. And I hear that a lot from people who come and visit. It's like, it's like I'm walking in a Hallmark movie, so. And the park lights. I'd encourage you, if you have any chance to drive through Roberts Park at night, take a trip. It's absolutely beautiful. Our goal is to just start it and grow it every year. We started it last year and it's doubled this year and there's more lights up. And our, our goal every year is to get more and more and more and to make it a really nice event that people want to locate the Connerville to come see. We kind of coordinated with Winterfest. We got live music, not live music. John's got music out there this year, live music. I was close, but not live.
Live from the MP three player.
There you go, live from the MP three player. So there's music playing out there. So it's just a, it's a beautiful park and it's beautiful seeing all the lights up there. So I want to thank the Parks Department and the community. He participated. It looks beautiful and thank you so much. And then lastly, I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. It's been a kind of a, a long year. I know we've had some rough moments. We've had good moments. I can tell you the future is very bright. We got some big things that are getting ready to take place and big things getting ready to happen. So be watching the news. We got some releases we're getting ready to put out. So I'm extremely excited for twenty twenty five. It's, we got a lot of good things getting ready to happen. So be watching the news because any day we have some outfits coming out, so. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Happy New Year's, since we won't be here until after the first.
That's right. Anybody else having any miscellaneous business? Not public forum, speech? No, just teasing you. Okay, taking a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion of second. On my favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried.